Call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, in my state's right. And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all.
Evening, everyone. Mr. Westgate, are you on up there?
Good evening.
Good evening. Can we have an update on Fiscav water main replacement project?
You certainly may through the chair. So I thought it would be good to provide a quick update since the project has officially begun. As a reminder, we had our advertisement for a bid on July 6th. We opened our bids on July 27th. We sent out a, after selecting the apparent little better and doing a background check, we sent out the letter of intent and had a pre-construction meeting on August 18th. On August 30th, the town manager executed a signed contract. And this Monday, the 18th, we began construction. The contractor has been out there, started with a soft start of just laying out pipe. And yesterday and today, they're actually putting the bypass into the ground and through driveways and making arrangements to take the other main offline. Last week, in anticipation of this work, we put up the message boards, letting folks know. We did door hangers on the entire neighborhood, including Whitney and the side streets that all connect, so that all of the residents were aware of what to expect. Emergency phone numbers, how to reach out to DPW or the police, through the police department to DPW on weekends and nights, if there's an issue. Our intention through the police chief and working with the schools is to keep that road open for, through traffic for the residents only, for the, that'll live in the neighborhood for the project. As a reminder to the board, this project is a quick project. So substantial completion is estimated within 120 days of execution of contract. So that puts us into the beginning of December. And completion at 1:50 would put us just into the beginning of January. And we'd anticipate that they would do this job and complete before winter shutdown, coming back in the spring only for looming and seeding of areas that were disturbed for the temporary bypass. Uh, the award, I didn't, I failed to mention the awarded contract went to CJP and Sons, Adam Millis. And that is my update.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions, anyone?
No, looking good.
Looking good.
Great job.
Thank you for your time.
You weren't kidding when you said shovel ready. Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2B is community compact grant submission capital plan update.
So gonna be applying for this coming around, community compact grant program to fund revisions to the town's capital plan. I'm working with a consultant right now, just identify the dollar value. Community compact grants aren't rolling applications, so want to get the board's consent to submit the application and then once it's completed, be able to submit. What it entails is basically just the scope. And then if selected, then they'll work on the contract, which then I'll break down for, to execute, since I know it will be above 25 minutes.
Any questions? I'll take a motion.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to submit an application to the community compact grant program for updating the town's capital plan.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. 2C, mass housing grant submission, Director of Land Use and Inspectional Services.
Good evening, Board.
Evening, Michael.
Again, and also Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. I'm requesting that the board selectmen endorse the mass housing partnership application for technical assistance. This is available to towns that have not achieved their 10% affordable housing requirement. This is a great program through Mass Housing where they provide the local boards technical assistance when reviewing 40B applications. So in this case, we have to wait until we receive the comprehensive permit filing before applying for this assistance. It's up to $15,000. We're only eligible for $10,000, just because we just had technicals last year or the year before. So I, in my application, am requesting that the consultant, third-party consultant, come in and really just provide the board education. Pretty brand-new board is enough, so, and to then be hit with a really large and really important project such as this. It'd be good to have the consultant on board to come and give us a little extra help with educating the board and perhaps a little bit of assistance beyond that. 27 James Street, which was a much smaller application approved earlier this year. Only four, only four units were approved with that. We had an attorney that was given to us through this program that assisted the board with meeting statutory requirements, timelines and things throughout that process. So it was helpful in that sense. And then on the backend, helped the board with myself, create a new decision document template for comprehensive permits. So I'll be working off that this time. So I asked the board if you have any questions. Obviously, don't be asked, but also ask it to endorse the application. Oh, and I'm waiting for Mass Housing to just give me feedback as, per my request, if they have any feedback on my request before I formally submit. So if I need to alter anything before I formally submit, you know, if the board could endorse the minor change.
When does the application have to be submitted?
There's no real deadline to it. I mean, it's, I want to get it in as soon as possible because we just are starting this new public hearing process with the comprehensive permit. But it's really anytime throughout that process you can request their help.
And it's not a certain deadline, and then you get the grant afterwards? Or you can get the grant after you apply?
You get the grant after you apply.
Okay. Questions?
No, thank you.
Take a motion?
I make a motion that the board of selectmen vote to authorize the Director of Land Use and Inspection Services to submit an application to Mass Housing for technical assistance for the zoning board of appeals, subject to any minor changes that may be made based on the feedback he gets from the state.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous action.
Thank you. And Joe has the document.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thanks.
Well, Sandy, excuse me.
Look at that. Thank you. Thanks.
Good night. Thank you, Michael. 3A, update from Colonial Power Group on the town's electric aggregation plan submission.
Good evening, Park, Happy, Little Five, North, Lower Mass.
Sally, also from Colonial Power.
We can, you might come up here and sit.
Watch the YouTube and stay tall. Where is the large?
Watch out for them.
So tonight, we're going to talk to first of all, the regulatory process and the Department of Public Utilities, it kind of does. So I have to tell you that the town manager, his woman's work, he has continued to get hacked in under the plan. Unfortunately, the department has placed some, and I know what I'm telling you doesn't make sense, right? It's the Department of Public Utilities, they're supposed to be out here working on behalf of the residents and communities of Massachusetts. When it comes to MUI Act, we just haven't seen that be the case. So I just, I need to say, Joe has done a fantastic job. We've had two rounds of, we call them IRs, they're interrogatories, simply questions on the plan. There are no questions we haven't seen before, they're just, I don't know who he knows. He knows someone that knows someone, he asks the question, they issue the IRs, we respond to the questions. No problem with any of the questions. But that doesn't get us any closer to what you're looking for is what we call an order that allows you to go into the marketplace and pick your energy on behalf of your residents. Again, even though it's on basic service. We're not talking there yet. Just on August 15th, the department opened up a proceeding. It's 2367 guidelines and a template plan for municipal aggregation. That's an open docket that they're, they're going to run through. There's a lot of unknowns with this document. Meaning what happens with your application that you already have in place? Could be moving those along in the interim, they could already approve it like they approved the last plan, and then you become subject to this. But we're not seeing any of that. What we have seen is a non-order order, and I know I'm fellow talking here, meaning bring your, your plan current to this specification and then include anything we have in the guidelines. And this is kind of the bad news. We don't find the guidelines to be tremendously beneficial to this board. And the reason I'm saying that, we had a call probably a week ago now, I believe you joined Joe, and there are some things in these guidelines that I don't think are necessary. And just let me explain through, and we don't really know why. Aggregation has been, I'm going to, I'm going to say it's been wildly successful over the last four or five years, and yet they're still slow to allow people to enter the marketplace. We're not certain what that is, but we see, so originally they say, oh, we have a template plan. I just want you to know, we use a template, so does in all the other aggregators. So how does that create any efficiencies? And then inside their template plan, they're saying, if you wanted to change your, your product, you need to go back and file again. Well, right now, you don't have to go back to file, because that's a local decision. They rule on the plan, and then it's deregulated when it comes to spot. Well, they're kind of taking some, some of the field to themselves. They want to make sure that they know what you're doing. And in my opinion, that's an overstep. It's a little more regulatory than we would like to see. We honestly believe that the staff, the cities and towns have been unbelievable stewards of these programs, and we think you should continue to do that. We don't need Big Brother watching us from the department. Those are deregulation and 164, 134, a law that you're using, allows you to make those decisions. We believe that the communities, we believe Upton has made wonderful decisions in the past. Program was up and running, saved about $100,000. I think it's like $91,000 to be exact. But in that time, there's a capacity issue, so we suspended the program. Just wanted to, you know, those are some of the things that have happened now. Again, with the plan, erosion of local control, we see it all the time in these guidelines. Things that we believe you should be deciding on, the department is trying to take away. So they're saying, the last time, back and forth when you go out, they're saying when you file your new plan, and I don't know how they figure you're going to be able to do this, you're to name your date that you're going to launch your program six months from now. But if you ask me, I'm going to tell you if I knew. I wish I knew where the market was going to be, but I don't. So we, we would come to you with indicative pricing, we have a conversation on what we see, then we make some decisions lots of times. We don't necessarily really go with the first one. So if you miss that window, you then have to wait six months before you go back out. I just want to explain to you, so let's just use last year as a perfect example, just, just so it happens and lines up perfectly. You got an order in 2021, and you said, I'm going to go up for June 1st of 2022. Well, unfortunately, I didn't know, I assume no one here knew that Mr. Putin was going to invade a sovereign nation. And the electricity markets responded absolutely hysterically to that. And we saw historic high pricing. I don't know if you want to start your program there, and I would fully understand why you would not. But if you missed that window, you wouldn't have had a chance, like never. I want to say maybe four or five of our communities said, hey, listen, we want to just try to deliver some relief, but the market sold off in November and December. So they started their program and were able to deliver savings compared to that 33891 that you were exposed to by using the marketplace to their advantage. But the departments, current rules, wouldn't allow you to do that. And that's a problem we have. And let's say you miss that next window, you had two chances, and then you have to refile. So all of these things that we see, we're, we're asking Denise described in an email, 101 to Joe, about maybe filing some comments in the docket, that some of the, some of these things are a little bit too restrictive. And if, if it's possible, that you could do that, that's great. They gave him comments and then a letter if you wanted to put it in, just kind of a cut and paste. If this all doesn't go the way we want it to go, more confusion, guidelines, regulations, right? And then we have the law. We've already begun the process, and the law is H3852. Representative Vitola, a lot of Brooklyners filed it. It's specific on what the department can and cannot do. There won't be as much ambiguity as there is in the current law, allowing them to take this land. Make these rules. So we're trying to make it more specific. We also asked the manager to approve us to put his name on that letter. Again, you're not in the process, so if you didn't fully get everything, I understand why you would want to push right now. But all he needs to do on that legislation is just to respond to the beast. His email would then allow us to put your name on, you're supporting that, that legislation. But again, if for any reason you don't feel comfortable, we don't want to push. You don't have a program up and running and those kind of things. Some of the towns don't feel comfortable, not, not fully understanding all the issues at hand. I, I just don't want to take up too much of your time. That's a whole bunch of me talking, and I don't know if you have any questions about what I've mentioned here, but I've tried to compress it into about 10 minutes, all of this. And it's a lot, make no mistake, I know it's a lot. It's just the department is, I, I'm not certain exactly what they're trying to do. I will say this, the, the current administration realizes they have a problem with MUI Act, and the, you know, the 36 and 48 months it takes to get an order out for an MUI Act is unacceptable. We believe this is what they're trying to do, we just believe it's being done the wrong way.
I have to defer to Joe on this one, so I think that.
So I mean, one thanks for the, for the board, I think, providing comments, especially because it really pushes, not only is the schedule unknown, but we've spent a lot of time and energy to pull that together, and there should be some recognition in those effort for those towns. They didn't have a chance to amend it, and it's in the same vote as us, and I'd like to talk to them, say, is there, is there something we, as two communities that share a regional school district, that sort of has something, has a little bit more voice, a little bit more recognition with our, because we also both have different representatives, Representative Meridian in Center, that have been great, reaching out and talking to, they are clearly getting some, some motion behind the scenes. But I hadn't had a chance to really take it, the legislation. I always get a little nervous on, on some of those without then taking a really close look. And, and again, it's one, one thing to sort of comment on how this impacts. And then also, it's a crazy town out here, outside of, sure, that time, it's rabble rouser. But I'll take a look, and, and then if there is something that we can come, can bring something back to the board, especially you've been finding out from Representative Meridian where things are, and that might be a good course.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Seems good.
So I think one of the main things is that, you know, wanting to, we continue to get, get calls and through our social services coordinator and other, and social services departments, we are trying to assist people. There are programs, not only for heating well, but also for electricity for people in need. So while this is for a much, much larger group within Upton, if there are people in need, definitely encourage people to reach out to us so that we can find ways that will help all, we're still working on this.
One thing I would say, last winter was just a, a train wreck. I don't expect National Grid to be 33891. They literally will probably file tomorrow. I expect it to be somewhere between, I don't know, 34 liter, I should say, maybe 20 to 16 cents a kilowatt hour, which from a historic standpoint is a busy one. But compared to last winter, it's, you know, some, almost 30%, like, almost, almost 40%.
Hey, nice.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Enlightening. Thank you very much for advocating for town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, yeah.
Lot of information.
A lot of information.
Glad.
We hit it with two emails, I was like, oh, boy, this is a lot of information.
Thank you so much.
No, that's perfect.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Town managers report.
Sitting around, town mentions for projects. We just heard from Dennis on Fiscav watering. Want to also let you all know and town know that we've made arrangements and are turning on the new website the end of next week. Kathleen Burnout, the town clerk's office, I mentioned previously, is sort of spearheading the effort to make sure that each department can get their finishing touches on the website and view for content as well as for consistency. So she's been doing a great job helping everyone bring that across the finish line. And also just want to thank staff. They've been, for two months, maintaining two web pages. The one that no one sees yet, and the one that everyone sees right now. Because when they transferred data, that sort of locked us into content that was historic, but then we had to continue to update. So I'd like to thank everyone for helping with that. Like I said, we're looking at switching over next Friday. Also, Laura knows from having the other hat on her head, we have been getting some calls and inquiries as far as what to do with triple E. And, you know, the other thing is, we, we do have some positive tests out there for West Nile virus. So while town is low for triple E, we're in the moderate risk group for West Nile virus, and reiterating the Board of Health, while we're not in the high risk red yet, and hopefully we don't, it's just a reminder, so we're dealing, just like the message for COVID, that mosquitoes don't respect town boundaries. Those Northridge ones are going to come over. But to take precautions, be aware of peak mosquito times, use bugs repellent, and also wear protective clothing, just be, be aware. The state does testing for mosquitoes, and, and if there's sometimes dead birds, they'll find, they'll test those to see if it's present. But that's usually, usually a lagging indicator that there's, if there's some in the area, there's potentially more than won't be. So just recommend that people take their precautions. Today, our, this is now sort of spinning over to the personnel compensation and classification study. Of HR wrapped up today, their interviews and position assessment stage of the project, and we're moving into the data collection of benchmark towns, and starting to compile that data and do some analysis. They indicated to me that the project is still on schedule, and we're looking for presentation and basically final materials from them sometime November. That will be able to be of use for us as we look at FY '25. Michael indicated that we have the 40B that was submitted for 45 to 51 Main Street, known as Upton Apartments. The zoning board appeals has, is going to be advertised in public hearing for October 18th. At 6:30, it's going to be in the great room of the community center. That is a Wednesday night. So I do expect a number of people to be, be there for, for that, not only from the neighborhood, but also department heads in interest of preference.
What was the date again?
October 18th. Thank you. Community center, we've had some, as, as on multiple reports, been giving the board an update that we've had some HVAC issues that have just persisted. We've escalated them to the point where we're having, we have the manufacturers out this week to try to resolve one of the area units. So hopefully that, that will be able to come up with a solution to address it. The group, so the building committee as well as staff, is continuing to review a draft plan for amending the layout for parking lot, additional parking spaces, and trying to get more parking spaces. And I'm working with Board of Health, as well as Matt Backs, well, the library director, and Paul Firey trying to coordinate final sign-offs. We have a men's club dinner that is scheduled for October 15th. That will happen, we will make sure everything is in line so that that can happen. Once it's in newsletter, we don't want to go back on to work. So at the last meeting, covered a lot of things that were coming out of what the departments were working on. So still a lot of things, this list could easily be longer. I gave a comprehensive list, I'll go back to the board, and these are the ones that have the most activities at that time.
No questions? Questions?
Nope. Thank you. Good stuff.
Thank you, Joe. We'll open it up for public comments. Hearing any? Next on the agenda is the VFW post 5594, Upton VFW Run to Remember the 5K Road Race. That's the application, right? Yep.
So I did talk to Sean, Sean Gregor, he was going to be here, but he may be jumping on. But this is also an request, I think we're pretty familiar with this, this run. He did indicate, when I sat down with him the other day, that the police department did request some, some changes to the, to the route that then, if you compare to last year, the intersection of Grove and Mendon, they gone around the island. This is how they want to cut the corner, so it has less impact and less potential conflict. So then the Star PN, it still ends that VFW, but it starts a little bit differently than last year. So, but this is a great event. That's, that VFW is consistently doing this project, this road race. And this did get on last minute. So the next meeting will just reaffirm this vote, because we didn't hit the 24 hours, I'm sorry, 48 hours since the agenda, but we're able to do that under the open meeting law as well as reaffirm that vote at the next meeting, waiting until October 3rd. We don't want to give some four days' notice.
Questions? No questions?
So.
Take a motion. The select board vote to approve the road race application for Upton's VFW Run to Remember 5K Road Race to be held on Saturday, October 7th, 2023, at 9 AM.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Have a review of draft special town meeting articles. Good evening, Sean.
I think he is. Sean, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
And now.
Yes.
Okay.
So we had, we just voted to approve the road race application.
Oh, excellent, okay, you're a few minutes ahead. I'm sorry, it took me a little bit to get in, had some technical problems getting on today.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. You want to go through the? Okay. Go through the articles?
Sure. So I did separate things out between articles that the board has been looking at, because they were really coming, reading out of our office and through the board selection. So this first item, 6B, is looking at the draft of those articles we're assembling. There are in-track changes showing the changes from the last document that the board had. The next item, 6C, will be when the proponents are talking about their articles. So sort of running, running through. You can see some of the changes. I don't know if you want to go, go through each, we've discussed them quite a bit. There are a couple changes that I did make, did remove the server article. That will not be needed, we're going to be leasing, so that those additional funds won't be. We're going to be leasing so that those additional funds won't be won't be needed.
Just a quick, quick note. I'm looking at article five, I guess. I'm assuming that the recommendation for the finance committee is just sort of stuck on all these and that it'll be
Yes.
the ones that are relevant.
So by the time we get close to printing, I do anticipate that the finance committee would then have their recommendation. I've seen within Upton it being done two ways for special town meetings. One, it not being included on the warrant like we do for annual. And then I've seen a couple where their recommendation is on that warrant. The timeline is such that I think that we should be able to get the recommendations. So by the time we execute the warrant for for printing, I think we'll have that. So these are just to make sure that remember to make record their vote as as favorable or unfavorable. And I'll I'll be filling in the explanations as well.
Speed studies. I like it. Mitigate speeding. Yes, love it. Thanks for that.
If it's successful, it's going to be even better.
Yeah.
It will up there.
Yeah.
So I believe the the last three the board may not have seen, these were in conversations with not only the CPC chair, but then also the Affordable Housing Trust Chair that because CPC did not have a chance to discuss it, I placed a placeholder for our transfer of CPC funds, CPC doing a community preservation plan, and then also doing a Affordable Housing Trust action plan. So if the board would like to have a discussion of of those last three, I can definitely circle for what the ideas and and the motion may end up needing. His motion may be what changes to narrow down the focus on, especially the first one.
Is the, yeah, is the transfer of the eight hundred and sixty seven thousand, is that sort of a normal sort of mandated transfer that we just do in the course of action?
So so this is, this is where it gets to be fun because in some towns, the ten percent is automatic and it just, it's like you divide your buckets and then the next article is now we're giving this bucket over to the Affordable Housing Trust. We're not worried about it. In other towns, the reserve that's held somewhere that ten percent lives, towns will say, well, we still want town meeting to act on it. So Affordable Housing Trust bring a project forward and then we'll decide. That's politics. That's what works in Upton. What works for one town where they just send the whole bucket over there doesn't mean that will work here. The two hundred thousand.
So it's not sending the whole bucket or not?
This is sending the whole bucket as of June thirtieth.
Yeah.
That will give us a chance. Affordable Housing Trust wants it.
Yeah.
It's then will that pass?
Awesome.
Right. Fincom and
But they don't know what they're going to do with it. So that'll be the discussion.
Well, that's part of the next two articles, right?
So the the last article.
Awesome.
I mean, there's a big difference between thirty thousand dollars to actually do something and just moving eight hundred. I mean, it's not for us to decide. It should be on here that people discuss. I'm just trying to understand. So the eight hundred and sixty seven thousand, we've never seen anything like that. This is the first time this has come up.
Yeah.
And so I'm, yeah, it'd be great to understand the background or explanation as to why this is changing from historical practice and who driving that and why.
And I think that's being driven by the the reconstituted Affordable Housing Trust that right now they're basically, they have twenty remainder of two hundred thousand, so twenty thousand dollars that was associated with the twenty eight Hartford as north property.
Yeah.
Part that that is the only, the remaining funds can only be used specifically on a project. They don't have the flexibility to try to do other things. And twenty one thousand is not much of any. So the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be having another meeting coming up soon. And we'll probably, this is going to be one of the topics. The last meeting, they basically said if it's the reserve, the reserve funds, those who just come to the Affordable Housing Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust, because the town created it, should be empowered to then utilize those funds to promote affordable housing. That's, that's going to be a good discussion to have, especially with the trust, with the finance. You know, is there a middle ground where it's like, okay, well, let's do two hundred thousand and start working? And then if there is something, maybe try to go back to another town meeting.
Great discussion to have. Sounds great. I get it.
So that plugs into the last article, which is fifteen thousand for, and it's coming from CPC funds to do an action plan to really help the Affordable Housing Trust focus in on what are you doing in year one, two, three, and four? Identify that roadmap so then they can come back to town meeting and say, this is what we're doing. Here's how we're going to be spending the money. Here's our priority.
Yeah.
Did that next door, wrapped it, and that really helped focus the Affordable Housing Trust because they then knew what they were going to do and they knew what their focus was and sort of tried to figure that out. But because that twenty one thousand can't be used for a planning study like this and specific on that property, that's why it's coming out of
Feels like we're putting the cart before the horse, asking for the eight hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars before there's a plan. I've got to believe that any rational person is going to say
An action plan or something.
Here's eight hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. We trust that you're going to do something great with it. I'd rather see a plan.
So on the October, October third meeting, on the October third meeting, that's when we would be sort of, while we have some people here tonight, this would be an opportunity for the Affordable Housing Trust to sort of present that. And if it, if it gets withdrawn or decides, hey, just let's wait until meeting, let's work on this. Then we can take care of that on a on the third.
Right.
And not have it on if that's really the rush.
Right. In my sense is that people's concern would be that there are transactions happening sort of behind closed doors that, I mean, I know it's all public. I know they're all public meetings, but that would be people's fears. Like, hey, we've got this very small group of people spending hundreds of thousands of taxpayer money without any check or balance, even though they are elected and we voted for them and all that. Like, I get all that. But I think that people will be more comfortable voting at town meeting to say, hey, before you spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a property. I think voters want to have a say in that. That's my guess. That's my opinion.
Yeah. And then similarly, working with Michael and the Chair of Community Preservation the Community Preservation Plan will also help. One, it's statuteually required. We need that help. This will also provide that focus for the CPC and ways of of really administering those funds and identifying that process as a way to also identify priorities.
Sure. A question. When we do these plans and, you know, we create these trusts, do we put, should we be putting timelines on it? In other words, okay, look, let's, this is a plan for three years. At the end of three years, we reevaluate what we've done and what we're going. Because I know some committees kind of just, well, they get along forever.
They get an action plan, but it just lasts forever.
Yeah, because look at the last housing trust. I mean, it died a slow death on a shelf somewhere and we came back. And we did have timelines, you know, things are more urgent and we got it done. But if we're going to create these things, I'd almost like to, if we have to create a plan, I'd like to put a review period in with, you know, what have you done? Where are we going? Yeah, updates.
Yeah. And then and that's by having the action plan, then it gives, it gives us that that timeline to then evaluate, okay, things were sort of identified year one through three.
Right.
Have we even done anything?
Because the situation could change.
And and that's where, that's where, you know, one of the, one of the challenging things is also, all of you are volunteers and you have your own life and things that you're worried about that. Yeah, the town's important, but sometimes those things take priorities. I've seen in lots of towns ebbs and flows of committees because the the volunteers go through their own lives. We're now fortunate to have a level of support to to maintain some of those activities so that if it means that staff is then pushing things along, the Affordable Housing Trust may be supportive, but they can't sort of push that harder. We have some more supports and and that helps maintain some of those things. And it helps sort of congeal, this is what the town is focused on.
Great.
We've seen everything.
Yeah, I think I made for the speed. I tried, I looked back at the meeting, tried to capture exactly what you were saying.
Yep, it's good.
The one thing is on the the Rustine and Holy Angels. I didn't make changes to that because Dennis and I are going to try to get a little bit more focus. Because if I just said, well, hundred here, hundred here, have part one and part two, we may not have it mixed right. And in talking to county council, he's like, if you struck Holy Angels, you just had it as Rustine, you cover that in the motion. So I know we talked about it, making changes, but you also talked about, we can also work on that closer and within the motion. So that's why nothing changed here.
Okay. Yep. Makes sense.
For me, well, Seth?
Yep, I am.
Hey. And the proponents of submitted articles to the warrant present?
So we have Marcella and Mike.
Tango.
Yeah. So and just for the board, we, I did include not only a copy of those articles, and there were seven in total. There is, I don't know if if Mike will be able to just comment on the Conservation Commission bylaw amendment. I previously mentioned to the board that planning board is bringing forward amendments table of use within Upton Center Business District to allow some uses that are special permit becomes site plan approval. Actually, fitness studio right now requires a special permit. They want to make it a site plan to be a little bit more flexible with some uses within the center here. And then also they are proposing amendments to the large scale ground mounted solar bylaw. The planning board is going to be holding a public hearing. It's beginning of October. I'll get you that date of that public hearing.
And will someone be able to speak to the intent of the changes?
Yes.
Mike Tango, are you, are you ready to stop hearing here or no?
Oh, yes. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I can, Gary Strickats, the Chair of the Lakes and Ponds Committee couldn't be at this meeting tonight. So I can speak to those two articles and also briefly to the Conservation Commission bylaw article. I'm not sure which is first, but the, there is a request, an article for fifty thousand dollars to do a management plan for Mill Pond and Pratt Pond. We call this phase two. Phase one, which is data collection, water quality data mostly, collection is underway this summer. It'll wrap up in October and then we'll have a data report that will be available to to consultant to to help to develop some management recommendations for both ponds. I do have a cost estimate. We had a cost estimate late last spring. It was a little bit too late for town meeting. Fifty to seventy thousand, and I have a cost estimate on a very similar scope today for fifty five to seventy five. So at this point, the committee is asking for fifty. And that's the the number that was presented to the Community Preservation Committee, which approved going forward with this article.
So does this tie in with the first phase as part of the scope?
Well, the the first phase was data collection, water quality and some sediment quality data. And this phase two will essentially analyze that data and other information to develop a management plan for for both ponds, for both Pratt and Mill Pond. That answers your question.
Yes.
Nope, this is great. I'm a fan. I still fully support this exercise, the endeavor and trying to make sure we manage both of those resources for the town's benefit. I mean, they're, one is, they're both beautiful assets to the town. And I think, you know, Mill Pond needs some work, and I think that this is part of getting it to a place where it can be everything it should be for the people in the community. So I'm very supportive.
Well, I'm fine with this. Okay. And we will add this to is this on the alarm right now?
See it. Draft these articles. I wanted to summarize first before
Okay.
bring me it.
All right.
Next one.
Thank you for the presentation. And when are we doing, going through these? October third?
So
Finalizing.
Figured at least for these because they they just came in that Mike had then summarized then the repair to the water broke watershed trail bridge and then also the water quality sampling. And then at the third, that's when the boat, the board would ideally just vote on, here's all the arms.
Okay.
So there's one here that's repair and upgrade the existing trail bridge at Warren Brook. Do you want to talk about that, Mike?
Through the Chair, Marcella is is available, Chair of the Land Studioship Committee to speak to that one.
Be happy to fill you in on that. We have a bridge on the property that is rotting away. It's in a very damp area. And it's seems to be more susceptible to rot. We've tried doing some repairs, but it's very patchy and piecemeal. And we're looking to collaborate with the Bay State Trail Riders Association and the Blackstone Valley New England Mountain Bike Riders Association and try to get this not just repaired but upgraded so that we can, it'll be, you know, the use will, it will make it a lot better and less slippery for horseback riders. And it'll be much better for cyclists and of course, any pedestrians or skiers or anybody snow shoeing, anybody doing outdoor activities. It would benefit every kind of trail user we have. That sums it up.
Thank you. Questions? I think if it's, if it's falling apart and we're upgrading it to the PVC or whatever it's called these days, makes a lot of sense to me. Right?
Love it. Thank you for the work.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
I think that's it. All right. We've got the
Water management testing.
Yes, this is Mike again. I can speak to that. The Lakes and Pond Committee would like to be able to do some of our own water quality testing. And we feel that this would allow us to be more flexible in hiring a contractor and also very cost effective. So this article proposes to purchase some equipment that would be used to measure oxygen and temperature in the water and also to collect water samples for analysis and an analytical budget. The the budget is expected to last at least three years. It's based on some prices that analytical 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 labs that we could use have for various parameters like phosphorus. Phosphorus, chlorophyll, nitrogen. And phytoplankton. So what we would hope to do is, you know, purchase the equipment. And I think one of the first prayers probably would be to collect some more data at Pratt Pond next summer. This summer, as y'all know, was a really, really wet summer and would be good to have some additional data for from Pratt Pond under hopefully more. More normal circumstances or maybe even under during a dry year. Also, there's an opportunity to work for Touchtone School, which, as you may know, now owns an island in Lake Watwood. They're interested in doing some environmental education programs and we could possibly loan out the equipment. For them to do some environmental work on Lake Watwood. Anyway, we we think this is a would be a good value to the town. You know, it's something that volunteers, a little bit of training could could accomplish.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
Mike, when you use these labs, are you using state certified labs? Because I know in my profession as a realtor, many local labs have lost their certification due to lack of meeting standards.
We we would, we would look for certified lab. There's Alpha Analytical, which is in Westboro, I believe they're certified. When I was working for the federal government, we used to use them. Also, the University of New Hampshire has a lab with competitive prices, but we we would be sure to to use a certified qualified lab. And we would also have some. Internal quality control procedures to make sure that the samples were collected properly as well.
What, above and beyond the studies that you did over this summer, Mike? I mean, what what would the additional data do for us in terms of taking action or gaining insight as to how to manage their our resources more effectively?
Well, at Pratt Pond and Mill Pond, again, we had an extremely wet. Summer. One month, I believe it was June, had three times the normal precipitation. And I feel that. You know, we have a snapshot right now what the pond looks like under a very unusually wet year and it would be. Good, and it might help to inform management plan if we had more information for a more normal year. Or even a dry year, like the year before last was an extremely dry year. And I would think, you know, there's going to be differences in water quality and, you know, based from year to year. I don't think we would, we wouldn't sample Pratt Pond as intensively next year with with our own equipment in our own. Own analytical budgets, but we could probably. You know, get a better feeling for what's going on, you know, if it was a more a more normal year. Right now.
So I'm seeing, sorry to interrupt you, but I, so I'm seeing the linkage now between number one, the fifty thousand dollars, which is. Management plan and a water quality monitoring plan. And this sampling and testing, this sampling and testing money would allow us to execute some of that quality monitoring. At a lower cost than having to contract that out every time we want to get samples and get data on the quality of what's going of of the water.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And I think we could expand it to other like other ponds too, for example, Wildwood, which we don't have any data for right now.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Before zoning by law amendment, large scale ground mounted, ground mounted solo solar. Photovoltaic installations, how do you say that?
Photovoltaic. So I, for the next meeting, I have Mike here just to sort of give the overview as well as. Again, this will be a topic of a public hearing. So that's that's going to be required for for this article as well and also.
Number five.
Number five, and even for the change from where it's likely to select board because it impacts its own by law.
So we'd need one on the general by law amendment to the wetland by law public hearing notification process.
Right, Mike, are you able to just give a quick summary on that that change to the general by law?
Sure, yeah, speaking for the commission, at our last meeting, the commission voted to present these by law changes to the Boris Lekman. The the main, well, first off, the by law was enacted, I think in two thousand four, and this is the first time that. Any changes have been proposed. We ran into a situation earlier this year concerning the need for public notices for a request for termination. You know, it's a nasty situation, but I think Michael Antonellis and Mary. Realized that we probably should tweak the by law just to make it clear that. Public notices are not required for cluster termination, that is consistent with state law. And the other, the other two changes, one has to do with fees, the judicial by law had some caps on fees for various endeavors. Mary Overhold, our conservation administrator, has recommended that we eliminate those those caps. Again, those this by law is almost twenty years old now and. I I think the feeling is some of the, some of the fees could be rate, could be increased. All the fees from collected by the by law basically go to. Fund wetland protection in the town either through the administrative salary or other expenses associated with. Regulating wet ones. And the third one is just to loosen up the the. Policy or the or the. Well. Right now, so someone, when someone is issued a permit under the by law, it's good for three years. And then the the bylaws indicates that it can be renewed for one year. We're proposing to allow that renewal to be three years, which again is, it's more consistent with the with the state regulations. So it's just loosening things up a little bit. So those were, again, those were the three changes. Really, all of them were kind of staff driven and but the commission did vote to to accept these proposed changes at our last meeting.
No questions.
The question on the first one around the notice for cluster developments, can you just articulate that a little more clearly? I just didn't quite hear everything you said about the first one.
Well, it has to do with a of application called a request for determination. Those applications usually filed for very minor projects, you know, maybe someone is say going to be. Proposing a swimming pool in the buffer zone or a new deck in a buffer zone, something like that. Those are very minor projects in general and the feeling is both on the state law and we'd like to make. The by law consistent with the state law is that for those types of minor projects, there's really no need to. Notify butters, in other words, to have the applicant actually send letters to the butters. There's still a need to public notice these these hearings basically, but there's no need. It's proposed, there's no need to to actually send the butters information about these these actions. A notice of intent would still require a butter notification through the mail.
Right, so so if somebody was going to put a pool within five feet of a property line, that was my property, there would still be a notice of intent. It's just that there will be a requirement for a notice of the public hearing.
If 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 a, if a, if the pool was within, certainly within fifty feet of. Of a wetland, there would probably be a need for notice of intent, I'm just giving you an example. If, especially if the that area was, say, wooded at this time. But if the, if the proposed pool was greater than fifty feet away in a lawn area. That would qualify for a request for determination under the, how we currently do business. And that would be an example of a really minor project that wouldn't, you know, really need. You know, a butter notification through the mail, now I'm not really sure what the building department does. What what they would require for building permit, I'm really not sure about that.
This is really the wetland portion of it.
This is the wetland portion of it. You know, I'm really not up on what. What notifications are required for through the for a building permit.
Yeah, that's a different thing, okay, I got it, thank you.
Okay. And number seven, educational materials for mosquito and tick borne diseases, a thousand dollars under the mosquito control.
Hi, it's Marcella again. We, I know that we're still in in flux to some degree. We will be coming before you in October to discuss the the future of the committee and some ideas we have to make it a stronger committee. So assuming that the committee continues working to educate the public. We were hoping to have a small budget just as, you know, print materials and. You know, any incidental costs, you know, we, we just want to start off and see if a thousand dollars. Will cover what we want to do, we put out educational materials both about mosquito borne diseases as well as tick borne diseases. So we're going to be expanding our, you know, we'd be producing more material and hopefully. Distributing it through the town, so that's what our request is for.
Thank you, Marcella, yes. I have a question, Marcella, all of this information is on the Board of Health's website, the prevention. And, you know, we use our flyers, it is there, I don't know if people look at the Board of Health, but where are you intending to glean your information for? And what will you be different, doing different than what is done by the Board of Health currently? Because we publish M D H and M P H, excuse me, information as soon as we get it.
Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of information with the, on the Board of Health page. This would be more proactive rather than having somebody go have to seek out some information on the town website. Being able to produce materials to hand out at, you know, if we're doing a talk or on Earth Day or at other events. We would have handouts that we could share with people, so it'd be more of an outreach that project to share the information with the public. And also, we, you know, when I'll be submitting to you a re, the restructuring of the. The proposed restructuring of the mosquito control board and there we we include cooperation with the Board of Health and. To have a a member or members of the Board of Health or their representative. Act as a consultant, not necessarily be on the board, so we do fully intend to include the Board of Health and the information that the Board of Health puts out. And keeping the, you know, the discussion open, but we just thought this would be one way to share the information more widely.
Yeah, I I think it's great to try to get the information out there and I think every committee I'm on, it's the bane of our existence is how do we get information to the public? Without, we really are sorely missing the town crier that came out every two weeks.
I know.
And we are, we seem to be in a void, so. That was some of my curiosity as well, Marcella, because every every committee I'm on goes, you know, nobody showed up for housing production and we were like, well, what else will we possibly have done?
Yeah.
Sort of flagging people down in the streets.
It's been a challenge without the crier and that's the other thing that we thought we could use the funding for. Is if we need to do a mailing or, you know, because previously we had inserts that we put into the town crier. It was a really, it was a perfect way to distribute material to everybody, every household in this town. And we don't have that anymore, so this is one, you know, one of our objectives is to get the material out there. If we don't have a publication that can do that, then this is an alternative.
I'm definitely su- supportive of this, like, you know, we've done it for the past couple of years, Marcella, I think it's always been well received. It's a good, you know, document in form to get out there and just get it in front of people. I'm sure some people, you know, put it on their little magnet family chalkboard in the kitchen or whatever with some of the ideas. But I do know that, I I think, I I don't know, but I believe based on my memory, if you did want to do a mailing to all of the. Residences in Upton, that it would be more than a thousand dollars, so you may just want to check that. So that you're putting in a dollar amount that would at least cover the printing of the brochure and the mailing of the brochure to folks in town. You might have to change the nature of the brochure too, right? Because before it was just paper, you threw it in the town crier, that was easy, it went to everybody, but if you're going to mail it. It probably has to be on some sort of card stock, which will be a little bit more. So just, just maybe check with the post office, see what the requirements are for sizes and card stock. And what it would cost to mail to everyone in town, because I think that's probably the best way to get it out there. You can distribute it at Heritage Day, you can distribute them at Earth Day, that's all great, but. I mean, I'm a fan of of mailing it to folks as well, at least look at it if you want to. I just would hate to go through the town meeting process and have that be insufficient for even doing a mailing, that's all.
Well, I I will look into that, the committee hasn't discussed the means of distribution specifically. What we did discuss was the product, the production and development of the materials that we could share. And there are a few other things that might, you know, incidental costs, you know, we had tossed around a number of ideas that. We'd be, that would be in cooperation with scouts or with neighbors or kids groups. So we we felt that a thousand dollars would be enough for us to peel it out to see what, you know, we could do with a thousand dollars. And go from there, we, you know, we'd be back next year, we, the reason we're not looking to have a budget. Is because we don't really know what our budget would be, so this is our, this is our experiment, we like to find out what we can do with a thousand dollars.
That's a great approach and I think the Affordable Housing Trust is going to use a similar approach. So that, that's great, thanks, well, I'm 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 supportive and happy to support this and whatever else you might need, so thanks.
I think the word needs to get out, Marcella, and really, we do have some great information for let's not recreate the wheel, take it right off of our site and feel free to distribute it.
Yeah, and the CDC has a lot of great stuff, it's, there's really, and you have links to it, so it's very helpful, yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Marcella.
So with those articles, if there's general consensus that while not looking for, but I do have motion as discussion dependent. If there's just consensus, just incorporate that into the draft and we can review every maybe. Futility on third.
Through that.
Think that's fine, I'm just scanning them again, yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, I don't see anything here immediately seems.
Two questions.
Putting it before the ball, letting them decide.
Right.
You know.
Yep, so I'll take a motion then.
Your turn, Brett. I was just looking.
I was just looking. We don't need this, so that.
You want to spend this, that you want an actual?
It was just.
Just on funny ones.
Um. I don't think we need a motion now. I think he just wants to know if we want him to put these seven into the draft warrant, which will then review and motion the actual.
Okay.
No, just the heading.
Yeah, and if you said this one, no way.
Right.
Um, that would be one thing. I just wanna make sure that I can incorporate things and, um, and, um, the final, that's one order.
I mean, I guess are there any on here that either thinks it shouldn't be on there or you'd wanna discuss?
Okay. Discussion of paid family and medical leave.
On this, I'd like to turn it over to HR Director, Sandy.
Hello. Um. Um, actually, earlier meeting in December, um, Boarded requested, um, exploring the adoption of the mass, um, paid family medical leave program. I was not at that meeting, but did listen to some of your comments and concerns. Um, as you know, um, fostering workplace will be made to top priority. And, um, we are committed to assessing and enhancing our programs. Um, as we, Joey mentioned earlier, we are in collaboration with Gov HR in, uh, going through a, um, complete, um, compensation structure. Um, we would also like, um, based on the Board's request, we could also consider, um, investigating the adoption of a paid family medical leave program with a rich, but that would require a total comprehensive assessment of our benefit structure. Um. Um, I know that, um, no other municipality has yet adopted the commonwealth's paid family medical leave program, but that doesn't preclude Upton for leading the way. But I think we need to acknowledge the potential challenges for municipal government staff and operations and weigh that against the benefits, um, of a, the state's program. Um, we would need to, um, that would involve evaluating both direct and indirect costs and engaging in negotiations with the unions, which we have for, to address potential, um, implementation issues. Um, I, um, included some attachments comparing the state's, uh, paid family medical leave plan and a private insurers. Just from the top, um, the state's, um, benefits are not, um, payable if the employee is already receiving an accrued paid leave in any amount, which means if once, if you, if we implemented the state's program, you would not be able to top that, um, to get a hundred percent of your pay. Also, uh, while you are receiving that benefit, like when you receive short-term disability, those, um, monies are not pensionable. So, if you were gonna, uh, receive, um, this pay for, say, a twenty-six week period, that would not be actionable, which, um, could, um, you know, add another six months of service before you retire. So, that's an important consideration. The, um, attachment two that, um, I had given was the standard, um, quote, there are insurance carriers that currently covers our short-term disability, long-term disability, uh, life and, uh, premiums. If we use that program, um, that would allow us to top off, um, the cost difference between the state's program and a private insurers program. Um, it's about, um, five or six thousand dollar difference. Um, but it's really essential to note that the annual premium costs do not account for the significant expected increases in, uh, in operation costs, um, which would be, um, overtime staffing and many, many other indirect, uh, costs as, um, as well as by negotiation. It would have to be bargained into, um, with our, our unions. Um, so that is an additional cost as well. Um, attachment four is, uh, right, um, what we currently offer for benefits. And, um, and if you, and the attachment five, it's just kind of a visual that weekly benefit tracking what we already, um, offer. Um, with the mass, the paid family medical leave benefits. And then the current benefits, just taking the situation, uh, if someone were to, um, basically, we already match the time, looking at an employee that's been employed with the town for two, two and a half years, we're already giving them that twenty weeks of paid leave without going into the state's program. The state's program.
Paid at what percent of their salary?
Um, uh, seventy percent, but we also, or a hundred percent of their salary, because we're paying them short-term disability, which would be seventy percent, but they could top off on that.
With their sick time and vacation or with?
With their sick time and vacation.
How, uh, could they also, if we offer the long-term disability, can they go from short-term disability to long-term if they had to and still?
Long-term, short-term disability as well as long-term disability is for, for your own serious condition. It's not, you cannot use short-term disability to care for someone else. It would only be for your own.
Under P F M.
On, under the state's program, you could, it's caring for your family member or your own, um, serious condition. We would offer both options.
And they could test.
Historically, uh, I think when the state implemented the, uh, paid family medical leave, it was looking at, um, the private industry who historically did not offer a lot of sick time benefits for full and part-time employees. Municipal employees historically have a very rich sick and vacation program. It's bargained in as well. Some of our unions would lose income by going onto the state plan as it is right now.
Which is why no towns have done it, I'm sure. Which is why no towns have done it, I'm sure. Um, so if, if a town employee today wanted to have a child and go on leave, how long could they take and still be, earn their full pay, full compensation?
They, um, they would go on short-term disability for a period of six or eight, or eight weeks. Six weeks, eight weeks if, um, it was a C-section.
Yeah.
And then they could, um.
And the six or eight weeks would be paid at a hundred percent?
No, that would be paid at seventy percent.
Yeah.
Uh, through the short-term disability program, but they could top off that benefit with their accrued time.
So, they would, I'm confused. So, they, they would be able to take six weeks, they would get paid seventy percent. How would they top it off? They would just take sick time during those six weeks kind of thing?
They, they use a couple of hours to bring it up to a hundred percent of their, um, regular weekly salary.
Got it. So, they would have to take twelve hours a week of vacation in order to get to a hundred percent, right? Cause twelve is thirty percent of forty.
Yes.
So, for those eight weeks, they would have to take
Right.
A, a, a day plus a week of their sick or vacation time in order to get fully paid. Okay, and then what happens after the six or eight weeks?
With the, with the state plan, you can't top off.
Yeah, so what happens after the six or eight weeks?
Six or eight weeks, they can use their sick pay.
Yeah.
And, and, um.
Vacation.
And their vacation time as well. Um, sick leave, um, can also be used, um, for illness of a dependent child, spouse, or other immediate relative. So, we've expanded our sick pay program that.
But that wouldn't, you couldn't take that for maternity care.
Yes.
You could?
Yes.
Even if your child's not sick?
You can, no, because you're taking it to care for your, um, child. You can use your sick time. Get your six weeks in, like, for instance, I had someone that had, um, accrued two and a half years, uh, two, two and a half years of service, they still have almost twelve weeks of sick time.
Yeah.
Then spread out.
Yeah, so they could use that sort of a, a day of week for this, a day a week for the six to eight weeks. I'm making up a day, twelve hours a week for the six or eight weeks. And then they could take how many weeks after that or as much sick or vacation time as they accrued? Got it.
So, you know, in, our benefits are all based on seniority, so.
Right.
You've been here.
And how much sick time or vacation time do people typically have after a couple of years?
Three hundred and twenty, uh, sick, uh, sick time they would have. And they would have anywhere from, uh, at least minimum eighty hours of vacation. So, anywhere from eighty to a hundred and sixty hours of vacation. That's on the non-union side. The union has more sick time.
Yeah.
Um, right now, they have about fifty days, fifty hours.
So, that sort of gets to like, assuming you don't mind eating up all of your vacation and sick time and you can do the short-term disability, you sort of get pretty close to that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's pretty simple.
Can I ask, when they're on disability, is it taxable? They get seventy percent of their pay, but is it taxed?
It is. At the end of the year, everyone's taxed on the, the portion, um, also that the town contributes. The short-term disability is a hundred percent, um, uh, employer paid, the town pays a hundred percent of the short-term disability.
That's a good question though.
Never having been employed by anyone, I didn't know that was.
That would make a big, that would make a big difference.
Disability policy.
Yeah.
It's tax-free.
Yeah.
So, that would have made the seventy percent would have actually.
More than what your normal take-home pay was.
I was thinking, you know, the government, you're sick and your vacation on top of it, but that negates that idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, um, the, um, you know, the, with the short, si, the six or eight weeks of short-term disability that you're on, in short-term disability, um, that is just for maternity, short-term disability. Um, if for an illness or surgery or something like that, extends out to twenty-six weeks.
Yeah.
And then if an employee had elected long-term disability, the long-term disability for your own serious illness would kick in as well. And the short-term disability and the long-term disability is determined by the insurer, not by the town.
Do any of these benefits apply for new fathers and/or families that are adopting an infant or a child?
They can still use their, the town's policies.
Today's benefits, whatever.
From the town, yes, you can use your sick time to care for a child or your vacation time as well.
But not that six or eight weeks.
Not the short-term disability is only for your own, uh, serious illness.
Yeah. Well, I guess they consider giving birth to serious illness, is that what we say?
It's your own, um.
Might be an affliction, but I don't know if it's a. A lifelong one.
That was the long-term disability paid for by the.
That's an election that employees can elect to take, and it's a hundred percent employee.
So, if they did P F M L A, and then could they negate the short-term disability and just go on P F M L A?
If, if we don't offer short-term disability, are you talking the state plan or private plan?
Well, private.
A private plan, um, that could be topped off. We could top that to that.
If it's top, uh, you could tack the short term onto the long term.
Not long-term disability is.
That's something else.
That's something else.
You could tack short-term disability onto P F M L A? Is that what you just said?
On the private plan.
On the private plan, yeah, not on the state.
Yes.
So, Sandy, they had indicated that, like, we, if, if we were to pull together a package, that we can see the cost that we had to incur on paying for one hundred percent of the short term, that down because we'd be then basically building it up with.
Through the P F M L A.
Running, um, so that, you know, no matter what it is, gonna be an increase, but that's where the evaluation for the CBA's, uh, what bargain agreements. That's where that's important, because if we were just dealing with the non-union, it's pretty straightforward as far as trying to quantify it. But with each having it a little different, that's where, um, to, to sort of take this to the next level would be, okay, what would be the impact? From a timing perspective, it's sort of a good time to try to figure that out because come the beginning of the year, we're pretty strictly starting to negotiate anyways. And we'd at least have some level of analysis done to identify, no, this is in your best interest, this is good. Usually, when the town is pushing something across the line, the reaction is usually you're, it's gotta be bad. You gotta take something. So, I, on, on the other side of the table, always looking at something in doubt. But, um, you know, sometimes also a change, like, like Sandy said, hitting the, um, uh, the time for what is pensionable, that can have an impact that, you know, CBA's are gonna be looking at as well. So, there's a whole package that, um, you know, impacts so many people that we just would need some assistance to, to try to really find to that. And we are, uh, looking at getting an estimate. So, at least we know a dollar figure, what would it cost to do that level of analysis?
So, just if you didn't use either P F M L A or F M L A?
F M L A is an automatic, it's an unpaid protected leave for twelve weeks of job protection.
That's what that is, yes.
Definitely.
And the only way you can get paid for that is to use your vacation.
F N L A is, F N L A is an unpaid benefit and it protects your job. You have a job to come back to after twelve weeks.
But during that time, if you've accrued vacation and sick, you can continue to get paid.
I had sixteen hundred and forty hours of sick time when I went out on F M L A and got a hundred percent.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
You're using your sick time. Absolutely.
But if you just had sick time and vacation time and you went out sick.
And short, and you.
No, no short-term disability, but you still accrued, uh.
You're not truly, when you're out on.
Upton doesn't do that?
When, when you're out on leave, you do not accrue any additional vacation.
Well, sick and vacation, if you're out on sick and vacation, you still accrue.
You're not accruing sick and vacation during the period of time that you're out on leave.
I think that, the nuance is when you're on leave. If you're, but that's a designation thing. If, if I have the flu for five days, that doesn't count.
You're not out on leave.
Right. I'm out and I'm stating it's for F M L A purposes, I'm still collecting a paycheck, but because I'm on that leave, I'm not accruing any.
Is that.
You're not, you're not eligible for short-term disability until you're out for fifteen days and then short-term disability kick in as well. So, I mean, there's so many pieces to the puzzle. Layers.
So, you have to, and then you have to impact, I can pick up a bit of policy.
Yes. I mean, the benefit is, is this like we just signed a contract last year and then kind of impacts energy? So, um, if, if towns are ever gonna look at their benefit package to make changes, since it's like the right, if you do.
Yeah, it's. So, if we went privately, it would be better, correct? Instead of going to state.
Or just restructure our whole benefit package and don't, do I, just to kind of inhale some hybrid?
Well, you could do that too. But how, what would be the cost of that?
I know.
And we need to get facts and figures and numbers for each scenario.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot of.
I mean, and again, this is a discussion, but like, my sense is that, right, like, someone should be able to collect their full pay, however that happens. And I, for whatever it is, sixteen weeks, twenty weeks, I don't know, sixteen weeks. I, I don't know that the number is fine, but at least that kind of timeframe. And I don't think that they should have to take sick or vacation time to do it. And I don't think that they should have to take sick or vacation time to do it. I mean, I think that like, that there can be a a an amount of time that is for. Childcare leave, and if you, and if it's twelve weeks or sixteen weeks, then fine, if you want to take extra vacation on top of that. Fine, but I don't think it should be like six weeks. And then you've got, if you want to take another six weeks, you've got to take it from your vacation time. I don't, it's just something that, when I get it, but I don't.
The office.
Yeah. Yeah, just in town, not through the state plan.
State now, you could drive it.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, I don't know, like, what do you, what are, what is your sense of, like, what we want to do, like, if, right, like, I think. It's great, this is an area that would be great to sort of leave the Commonwealth and say, all right, this is like a. Best-in-state plan that we offer, but what do we, do we think, A, that's valuable? Do we think people want to do it? Do you think people care or invested in it? Do you think it's worth going down this path? And to what end, right? So sort of what are we trying to exactly accomplish? If we can sort of lay that out or agree, then great, but I don't wanna. I don't think it's necessarily worth doing a ton of analysis if we don't really know what we want to do.
Even on short-term disability, the first two weeks you don't get paid. So what are you gonna do? You're gonna take sick time and vacation for that, and then on the other end, not have it?
That's what I mean.
I I I think, you know.
Because then your kid gets sick and you've taken all your sick time when they were born, and then you're in month nine and the kid gets sick and then what, take paid leave at that point?
And I I think things have changed since the pandemic, because, you know, my kids were not, they're, he's an adult. But the cost of childcare today is such a phenomenal cost. So to have someone take six weeks and attempt to find A placement. And B, pay for it, you know, maybe we should lead the way and look at it and say, look, if you're gonna adopt, if you're gonna have a baby. We're gonna give you twelve weeks, so A, you can heal, and B, you can um get your feet underneath it.
But it has to be, you can discriminate against one to another.
No, no.
What do you mean, one to another, one what?
A medical condition. If I'm gonna give you that's amount of paid time off for this condition, then I need to give it to you for that condition as well.
I don't know, I think companies pretty routinely have maternity leave policy, separate from medical leave policies.
And for the fathers.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
There's maternity leave and there's maternity leave, and certainly in private institutions like.
Maternity and paternity, because I know.
Right, or adopted parent leave, like, they're different policies, it's not like, wait a minute, she gets to take twelve weeks off because she just haven't been, had a baby. But I stuck my toe, I should get twelve weeks paid off, because I'm stuck, like, they're just different things. Right, like, or is that not true? I don't know.
No, it's to a degree.
Yeah.
Okay, you're talking twelve weeks of bonding. I don't need twelve weeks of bond, that's separate. But if for the first six weeks, if I'm gonna get paid for the first six weeks for a serious medical condition. It doesn't matter whether I've had a baby or a hot.
Oh, I'm not talking about medical conditions at all. It's all about maternity leave, paternity leave.
And not necessarily bonding, but just the fact that I think the onus on on parents is so, you know, there's. There are no childcare facilities, it costs a fortune.
Yeah.
And I know as somebody who had not one but two C-sections, um, you know, I don't know that eight weeks is really, they don't even look to drive.
You know, so enough the next day. So that, so just to be clear, like, for me, this is only about. People that, it's about paternity leave, maternity leave, and people that are adopting a new child. Like, that's what this is about for me. This isn't at all about general medical leave stuff. To me, that's a totally separate thing that I'm not concerned about at all.
So I I think one of the things, and and this is, this is, this is why it's so beneficial to have these conversations, is because we can. Um, also then make sure that, like, we can uh go to our our benefits people and um also. You know, labor council, labor council isn't mainly about when getting in trouble with uh employees or unions. It's also about healthcare of those things, and to sort of navigate, can we ourselves focus on that?
Right, right, can can we, can we often have a best-in-class maternity and paternity leave policy?
Because I I think from what I've heard, from feedback I've heard, ours is kind of, six weeks isn't really what is normal out in the world.
Short-term.
No, no, maternity, not, not, we're not talking short-term disability, we're talking maternity, paternity. So. I mean, normally you.
Right.
You wouldn't have um short-term disability to cover a patern- uh maternity leave. Paternity, child care or whatever, that would come under a whole separate policy, I think.
Different thing, right, like, if if when I, when I, when I adopted a child at Fidelity, I got twelve weeks of. It was parent, it was called parental leave.
Yeah.
So really, for me, that's, I guess maybe that's a more general way to say this, like, this is about parental leave, so you get a new child, I don't care if it's, you're adopting an eight-year-old. You still need some time to.
Right.
Get your life together and figure it out. Um, so that's what this is for me, is about paternal or.
Eternal.
Eternal leave, right?
Parental.
Because. Parental, parental. There's enough of that.
I personally don't think it should be short-term disability.
No.
No, I just don't.
That's why I think maybe we were, we were confused, because for me, it's just about that parental leave.
It's just the parental habit to do, I know we mentioned other things, so we.
I mean, I don't think we need to call it anything, let's call it parental leave.
In the world.
Right, it's parental leave, that's.
Twelve, twelve weeks of bonding right now is the greatest.
I don't know, I don't know where, it's different at different companies, right? At Fidelity, it's like sixteen weeks. And I think nationally, there's a policy that affects, it's not, not for municipalities, obviously, but. And there are paid, there's a, there's a national. Don't wait for me right now, but.
Yeah, no, I I think.
So I think that's, that's what we're talking about, is the parental leave, paternity, paternity, parental leave, not medical stuff. Obviously, if you deliver a baby or have a C-section, there's a medical component of that, but that's not the leave that we're talking about. That's not the benefit that we're talking about.
If it's for fathers as well.
Exactly.
And like you said, whether or not you were a doctor. Right. You bring someone home and you add them to the house. That's right. Wherever they came from, you're a doctor, whatever. So instead of changing the whole benefit plan, you should just focus on who could add this in or.
Yeah, that might be easier, right?
Buy it to do it for now.
I think, I think we can take the on the phone and say, this is really opposed.
Yeah.
Rather than like trying to take the whole aspect of it.
Of all the benefits and medical, like, that's a whole flagmine here.
Yeah, especially if we have to run it through non-union, union, and we're trying to to modify benefits, I can see that being. That's it, that would be a task. Yes, onerous might be the correct word.
Yeah, so let us re, let us recheck, focus in on that and we'll report back.
Yeah, all right. Works. What's the national?
The the link, the lingo is definitely paid parental leave. And it's under Title V, blah, 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 provides up to twelve weeks of parental, paid parental leave. To covered federal employees, to cover birth, placement, adoption, or foster care. And again, this doesn't apply to towns, I'm just saying that this is sort of.
Yeah, right.
This is paid parental leave, right, and this, this is from the US Department of Labor, exactly. Yeah.
It's twelve weeks.
Yep. Yeah, so that's sort of a guideline of like, okay, let's at least meet that.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
Does that help?
It is to rush.
It's a lot, it's a, hopefully it makes it a little simpler.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, before we go get more, because it can be.
That whole game of spinning around the circus until you fall down, it's fun when you're a kid.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it's more.
That's adults.
So direction is.
Yeah, we do our best to provide it, we don't always get it right, so we're in it, we're in it together.
Four hundred and ten days.
Yeah.
Everyone else, everyone else in the world is a lot more civilized.
Is it Sweden that pays you to stay on the ratio showing, because they recognize that you are actually working.
Places like it's twelve, like it's twelve.
Always came to work to relax and rest.
I worked every one of the way out.
Yeah, the kid. Hey, when my kids went to daycare, it was fifty bucks a week. It's fifty bucks an hour.
I hear babies, it's making a fortune too, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
They agree of meeting minutes?
Do we, oh, yes, we do. All the dates. I don't think they're here, and I can't get them. And it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, no.
Etsy covers twenty-six weeks, US-based company Etsy.
Oh, really? Well, the the minutes we received, I go into those, were dated.
June twenty-third, July twelfth, August twenty-second, September fifth.
Sounds like you already did that.
I got these ones, yes.
Different, yeah.
I think by accident, the the ones for the for the June workshop. I didn't, I didn't, so we didn't brought it back.
Okay.
I just had.
I forgot the June workshop had lower, so, right?
Yeah, so the June twenty-third workshop, yep. So the June twenty-third, um, July twelfth, um, September fifth, and August twenty-second.
Those are them. Yeah, second to me, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous action.
Anything to talk about?
And and we'll make sure that for that workshop, uh, um, the address in that first sentence for the forty P is included. That was something you were, you had mentioned to um us just before this.
Perfect, and you'll get in touch with KP on eternity, okay?
Yeah.
Paternity, press eternity. A rental, oh, a rental.
We're gonna get the chart. We're gonna get this right.
Might take all.
People of our community, we will get this right.
Take a motion to adjourn, take a motion to adjourn the meeting of September nineteenth at eight forty-three PM.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.